Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this June 7th, 2022 Regular Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
We have, actually, Doreen Stoker is here tonight, I think, to go ahead and introduce our student, new student body president. Doreen?
Hi, everybody. I'm Doreen Stoker. I'm one of the student council advisors at the high school, and we're excited that we had our elections last week. And I know you're used to hearing Megan Spencer do the reports each month, and we want to welcome Sarah Valla, who's our new president for next year. She's ready to jump right in and do the report tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. Thank you for the applause. I've done this two times over already, but, you know, just gets nervous every time. So, messages for the night. The counseling office held a pre-summer college night last Wednesday night at SHS. This is the first in-person evening program hosted by the counseling office in two years. And although intended for juniors and parents of juniors, parents and students of grades nine and 10 were invited as well. Almost 100 parents and students were there in attendance. And just last night, the SHS fashion show took place, which showed off amazing outfits that the students made. And on Saturday, we also had our science fair, in which many grades, many students within the science research program won a multitude of awards. And so, upcoming events, we have a lot of them. This week, June 6th through June 9th is our Senior Spirit Week. June 8th is the Band and Guitar Spring Concert at 7:00. June 9th is the Senior Sports Award at 6:00. June 10th is the Last Day of Classes. June 10th is also the Promenade, and then eventually the Prom at 7:00 at the Green Tree Country Club. June 13th is the Septa Annual Award Ceremony. And the weeks of June 13th through June 23rd, we have finals and Regents exams. June 17th, the orchestra has their String Stravaganza. June 20th, we have no school, or 17th. June 21st is our mandatory graduation rehearsal. June 21st is the Senior Sunset. The 22nd is the 81st Annual SHS Graduation, and the 24th is the Last Day of School for everyone. And that's all the updates we have for tonight. Can't wait to be the reporter for the next year. Thank you so much.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and ask the board if it's okay if we can just maybe move around and sit in that front row. And then we're going to go ahead and start off this evening's celebrations tonight. Just a little earlier, we're just going to move the public comment till right after this section, so we can get the families here and get the festivities started. And so, we'll go ahead, and so, Mr. Catalino, I think we've got you up first with our student athletes, so if you can kind of make your way to the front.
I guess, Dr. Blanch, you didn't have enough faith in their athletic abilities. We were going to bring them up on the stage, but there were a few too many wires. I am glad to announce, for the second time this year, that we had all of our spring teams, our varsity teams, make the Scholar-Athlete Program for the state. That means that they had 75% of their team, 90% or better, and this year, this spring, we had all of our teams make it. We do have some representatives here tonight for those teams. If they would just please come up. When I call their name, shake the board's hands, and then go back to your seats. Our varsity baseball, I don't believe we have anybody. Girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, golf, we have Maya Shakura and Sean Collins. Please come forward. And Coach Fiorito. Coach, you can come down, too. We have enough faith. All right. For boys tennis, we had Hudson Chance. Stop right there. Before you get there, I want to present this certificate. Hudson made it to our sectional quarterfinals in singles this year and had a tremendous Our track teams are having their banquet right now, but we do have two of their representatives here. So at this time, I'd like to, first of all, have Alex Price, please stand, one of our coaches. And then we had Brian Luciano and Matt Kahn. Go ahead. Go ahead and shake your hands. Stay right here. I'm trying to move this along here a little quickly. This smaller individual next to my right is Brian Luciano. He's had a terrific career, and as I always tell the kids, it's always nice to be the last team or the last individual still standing. And Brian is still standing. He will be representing Somers High School, Section 1, this weekend at the state meet in the Boys Shopwood, as well as the Boys Discus. And that's the first time that we've ever had a student athlete represent Somers in both in the state meet. So congratulations, Brian. Also, I want to announce that the boys' track team was league champions this year. They were the Class A, Section 1 champions, first time that we've ever captured a Class A championship, which is a step up for us, which is a terrific accomplishment. They were runners-up in the Westchester County Championships, and when the coaches called to tell me that, they said, "Coach, we were the public school champions." We lost to Iowa Prep, but they were very proud, and so was I of being such a great team. And as I said before, Brian will be representing us again this weekend at the state, so we wish him the best of luck. Maya, I'd like to bring you back down. I apologize for that. But Maya Shakura was all section, and she made the sectional finals this year in golf. Our girls' lacrosse team was the Section 1 finalist this year, lost in a tough game to John J. Cross River. Did a terrific job. And our baseball team, we were Section 1, Class A champions, first time since 2009. They were co-league champions, and they were a New York State Regional finalist. So congratulations to the boys' baseball team. All in all, it was a terrific, terrific school year as far as our athletic teams was concerned, and I thank you very much.
All right. So why don't you start with Mr. Malia? Is that you ready? Go ahead. Thank you, Dr. Blanch. My name is William Malia. I am the teacher of science research here in the district. I just wanted to come and speak to the board real quick to acknowledge some of the accolades that our students have received this year. It has been a very successful year for science research this year. Our students competed in nine research competitions throughout the year. I would go through the list of all of the names, but we would be here for a while, and I will spare you from reading the titles of their projects, because we'll be here all night. But I did provide you guys with program books from our symposium, so it has a list of all of the awards that students won in there. One in particular that I want to acknowledge is Emily Dodd. She's had a very, very successful year. She was named a Regeneron Science Talent Search finalist for her paper in the fall. She also competed at the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair and was a grand prize winner. So she won a spot at the International Science and Engineering Fair, which her and I traveled down there about three weeks ago to Atlanta, Georgia for that, where she placed third in her category at that fair, which is a tremendous accomplishment. She also was first place in the New York State Science and Engineering Fair, and she was just awarded a paid internship at Regeneron Pharmaceuticals this summer for her work. The program is continuing to grow. We're seeing a lot of positive trends in the area with regards to mentorships and students finding things. It's been a difficult couple of years with students doing in-person research because of the closures due to the pandemic, but we are seeing a lot of facilities opening up. Of our 24 current sophomores this year, 20 of them have attained mentors, which is a very good number for us at this point in the year. We have several students who are going to be working at research facilities in New York City, such as Mount Sinai and Albert Einstein College of Medicine. We have one student who's collaborating with researchers from Kyo University in Tokyo and the University of Innsbruck in Austria. It's Maya Shirakura, right over here. And we also have students who are going to be conducting research in Boston at Harvard Medical School and the U.S. Air Force Academy's Aeronautics Research Center in Colorado. Mr. Bayer, if you remember that email that you received, where's Mr. Bayer? Oh, right here. If you remember that email you received last year from somebody at the Naval Academy asking if this student was real, or if they were a spy trying to get top-secret information on the research, well, it paid off, and she's going to be working at the U.S. Air Force Academy this summer. She's not a spy. So, talking kind of about the program, the program itself has had a couple of big successes this year. This year, we became the new home of the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, which has historically been held at Sleepy Hollow. It's one of the largest regional science fairs in the country. This year, unfortunately, the in-person competition had to be changed to remote, just because of things that were still going on in our society. But we were able to have the award ceremony held at Somers High School, where over 600 students were in attendance receiving awards for their work, with a total of attendance of almost 1,200 people. Next year, the competition is going to be in-person, being held at SHS and Primrose, and the award ceremony, that competition will be on March 18th next year, and the award ceremony is going to be on Thursday, March 23rd. Another update is that the Somer Science Fair, which this was its fifth year, became the only science research competition of its kind in New York State that offers the chance to compete to first-year research students. This fair used to be run in conjunction with the Westlake Science Fair, and the county was split north and south. That fair is no longer being run, and so the Somer Science Fair has now taken the entire county plus schools from Duchess and Putnam, and we're looking to add schools from Orange next year. That fair was last Saturday, and we had 526 students from 35 districts competing, and we had 11 of our students place in their categories at that fair. So overall, the program, thank you. So overall, the program has seen some amazing success this year, and we look to continue that trend into the future. Thank you.
Dr. Blanch, members of the board, thank you so much. I'm here tonight to announce that, for the seventh year in a row, Somer Central School District has been named by the NAMM Foundation and the University of Kansas as one of the best communities for music education. That's really, sure, yeah. That's very much due to your support and the efforts of our students and parents in the community. During the pandemic, you allowed as much music education to continue as it could, and while we really, really found out that so much of making music, and the importance of making music is a social and emotional thing, because having music on Zoom just wasn't the same thing, the NAMM Foundation recognized our efforts and our unique ways of keeping music education going. In fact, we're thrilled, you heard Ms. Malara and Ms. Chan's groups playing before the meeting, and we're performing again. We went from having our musical and our concerts at the high school in a tent, actually, to in the auditorium this year. Our fifth-grade students, this is a stat that, I mean, we're thrilled they're going to play, but it's kind of tough to think about. Our fifth-grade students will be presenting concerts next week, and that will be the first concert they've ever presented at Somers Intermediate School. So they're very thrilled to do it. The award, I'm going to close with a couple of factors of the award. They survey what we put into a program in terms of budget. They survey personnel, what we have for resources, how much music is offered to students, when. And really, this district, I think, is a wonderful place to make music, and I'm so glad that they did recognize us again. So thank you so much for letting us talk about that, and congratulations on all your wonderful achievements, students, and thank you.
Terry, I think you forgot to mention that it's my singing that really pushed us over the edge of getting that award, correct?
It pushed us over the edge.
Certainly pushed something. Good evening, everybody, and first of all, congratulations to all of our students here tonight, and I'm here to talk about three individuals, two of whom were already up here for other awards, which, a recognition which speaks to who they are as both students and athletes. And those are our valedictorian and salutatorian for the class of 2022. And so first, our salutatorian, who will be attending University of Michigan next year, is Hudson Chance, and our... Our valedictorian, who will be attending Cornell University in the fall, Matthew Kahn. And as I like to remind them all the time, they hopefully are going to go home and continue working on their speeches. And next, we have a student who's being honored from our local BOSI's program, our PNW BOSI's program, for a Student of Distinction Award. She is enrolled in their medical assistance program, and so we have a short video to
Of course, there were so many awards that the projector has turned off, and so we'll just let that warm up for a second. I'll spare you singing. Mark, if you'd like to take over for that, you can.
We're waiting for it to warm up.
No.
Well, I guess we have to. It's coming on.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure that I join you to announce this month's recipient of the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI Student of Distinction Award. This significant achievement is for students recognized by our staff for outstanding performance and personal growth. I also want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support. We value our relationship with your school district and look forward to continuing to serve your needs. And now for the Student of Distinction Award.
It's my pleasure to recognize Samantha Mack as our Student of Distinction for the month of May from the Somer Central School District. Samantha is a member of our medical assisting program here at the Tech Center. The medical assisting program is a rigorous, two-year program that introduces students in the medical field. Samantha has stood out amongst her peers. She's a true leader and someone that really is dedicated to her studies here at the Tech Center. Again, it's my pleasure to recognize Samantha Mack as our Student of Distinction for the month of May from the Somer Central School District.
Thank you, Mr. Woodani.
So our next part this evening, we have our 25 years of service for our Somers family members here. So we have, I think, a dozen folks, and we're going to start off with promos tonight with Ms. Winter and Ms. Banana.
I'd like to invite Nora Mackey to join us at the podium. Good evening, Dr. Blanch and the Board of Education. We're happy to introduce Nora Mackey. Nora Whelan Mackey has been a reading specialist at Primrose for the last 25 years. In that time, Nora has been instrumental in teaching our youngest and most vulnerable students how to read. A strong Irish lass, Mrs. Mackey has no problem taking out letter tiles, chart papers, books, and every tool you can imagine to connect children to text. Nora is a trained reading recovery teacher who can systematically break down a student's strengths and weaknesses and provide support in those areas. She can unpack the trickiest of learning situations and, like a doctor, prescribe what is needed for the student to thrive. Likewise, Nora can systematically build up a child who once struggled mightily until they see themselves as a reader or writer. A reading specialist to the core, Nora thrives and lives for those moments when a child reads, understands, and enjoys books. A resource to her colleagues, they come in with their running records, their foundation scores and writing samples, and Nora will hunker down with a colleague until a plan is made. A resource and calm, reassuring voice, parents are grateful that when they speak to Mrs. Mackey, she has practical suggestions and complimentary words to share. No matter how you tap it out, Nora Mackey's 25 years of service have been a gift to the children of the Somer Central School District.
So 1997 was a busy year at SIS. I have four people who I'd like to join me. Julie Wickowitz, Jen Colletta, John Bedini, and Lynn Stepkosky.
So I'd like to congratulate Julie Wickowitz first on her 25 years of service to the students at SIS. Julie has been a beneficial and influential member of both our 3rd and 4th grade teams. Students who have had Mrs. Wickowitz characterize her as funny, caring, and supportive. She continually pushes her students to reach their fullest potential. She sets high expectations, and she helps students achieve those goals. Her support of students leads them to become confident, independent learners who take pride in their successes. Julie enjoys cooking and is a foodie of different ethnic foods. She brings her love of travel and different cultures back into the classroom with her ability to work with our ENL students. And this creates a classroom that celebrates all cultures and backgrounds. This year, she was our World Language Club advisor, and the kids were so lucky to explore her love, with her, her love of languages and culture. Julie also has a heart of gold and is also finding ways to support her students both in and out of the classroom. She can be found helping families in need, and she doesn't let anyone know. Without telling anyone, she has been known to take it among herself to make weekly food deliveries to families in need in her classroom. She researches the foods they like from their culture, or what their favorite ingredients are, puts recipes together, and drops off the food at the families' houses. She gives them gift cards to take the kids out to eat as well. It is this caring and concern that makes Julie such a special person and educator, and we are so lucky to have her at SIS. So congratulations on your 25 years, and thank you. Next, we have Jen Colletta. Congratulations on your 25 years at SIS. Jen has been an integral member of our 3rd grade team, like Julie, for 16 years, and our 4th, 5th grade team, where now she gets those kids ready for the past nine years for SMS. She's always smiling, has a very positive attitude. Her children in the classroom have that positive attitude as well. She builds confident learners who have the desire to succeed. In Mrs. Colletta's classroom, students gain self-confidence and independence. Jen is able to plant the tiniest seeds in her students and help them to grow in big, mighty trees that don't grow in Colorado, with the desire to learn and the courage to grow. Jen's leadership role and guidance has moved our social studies curriculum to become engaging for all our students, and she supported her colleagues in developing that program to be rich and robust. Our SIS community is truly blessed to have Jen, and we thank her for all her positive impact she has on our students. And next, we have one of my former 4th grade colleagues, John Bedini. John has been with us for 25 years, and he's been very dedicated and an inspiration to our 4th grade students. Mr. Bedini brings an energy to his classroom that inspires and motivates children. A true lover of history, John's mark on SIS in our 4th grade will be his living history experience and the lens he brings to our students. He helped us to develop, organize, and start Colonial Day, American Revolution Living History Day, and our Living History Club, where students just truly get totally engrossed and engaged in history. Students in John's class know that he is their biggest supporter, whether he's sharing a fishing story or a skiing story with his class. The message to his students is always to persevere, try your best, and be kind to others. John also has supported our teachers throughout the district with his work with the North ... Teacher Center, Putnam Northern Westchester. In this role, he strives to provide professional development for teachers, both in Somers and our neighboring districts, and giving them the... our neighboring districts, and giving them the opportunity to collaborate with one another. The students at SIS, John, are very lucky to have you, and thank you for your dedication and support for the past 25 years. It was a busy year. Next, we have Lynn Stepkosky. Congratulations to her for her 25 years of service at SIS. No, I don't have to, really, I don't. Over the years, Lynn has touched the lives of so many of our young students. She was a 3rd grade teacher for many years. She has also helped in our AIS with some of our struggling students for reading and math. Lynn's classroom's always a warm, welcoming, and fun and exciting place to learn. They are reminiscent of the time she spent working in Disney, and she brings that smile and laughter to all the students she works with. Lynn has an innate ability to connect with her students and assisting them to become strong readers and to grow academically. She's an advocate for the needs of students and offers them the help and support they need, and she's dedicated to find the best and most effective way to help all students lean and succeed. She, every child is a puzzle to her, and she wants to put those pieces together. Every student that has ever crossed the threshold of Lynn's classrooms feel they are very special, valued, and respected. The connections she forms with her students truly help them to be successful for many years to come. So, congratulations, Lynn, and thank you for your 25 years of service.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations. I'm here to talk about Gary Wanderling, who I'd like to congratulate on 25 years of service. He's unable to be here this evening. Gary has actually been at SMS for longer than 25 years. He is a Somers alum and a cornerstone of our building. Literally, he lives in the corner of our building on the main floor. He's an art teacher, but he teaches kids much more than just art. His class is a place where students are able to be creative, take risks, socialize while producing great works of art. For some students, art class is a place to take a breath during a busy day, to shine in a different way, and Gary orchestrates all of it. Gary's an advocate for students and an advocate for the arts. He serves as a faculty liaison to our PTA, and he's the advisor to the art club, where he often has dozens of kids after school, allowing them to follow their passions and be creative in a, in a less formal way. Gary has always been a huge supporter of SMS. He understands the challenges of middle school, and he understands the role that the arts play in those challenges. He allows kids to be kids, and he allows them to grow over time. He often gets to work with kids three years in a row and really gets to see that change from 6th grade to 8th grade. I congratulate Gary on 25 years of service, and I thank him for his support to our students and our community.
All right, I'm back. I've been back a few times tonight to talk about five individuals, one of whom couldn't be here tonight, so just wanted to congratulate and recognize Damas Boyer from our physics department and our science department, our physics, our science department physics teacher. Damas has been with us for 25 years and has really helped to lead that program. Couple years ago, when the high school decided to move to become an IB school, we needed someone to teach IB physics, which is what we decided as one of our science courses, and Damas stepped up to the plate to help do that. And he really has worked to inspire students and, and come, come to love their study of physics and, and to really succeed in that. So, we want to congratulate Damas Boyer, who couldn't be here tonight, but we still want to congratulate him. All right, the next four people are here, so I'm gonna call them up, but I'm gonna do them individually, because the first person I'm gonna talk about very briefly, because she will then be back again when we honor our retirees. So, rather than do two speeches, I will wait to do my comments about our first 25-year recipient, who is Mary Cousys, from our science department. All right, so the next three, I'm gonna call up are Joan Cass, Ally Ferrier, and Angela Holder. I guess whoever's last, I go first. So, I'm gonna talk about Ms. Holder. Angela Holder has been with us for 25 years as our beloved art teacher, who has done so much more than just teach art, although she does that also extremely well. With a passion and love for all things art, she has helped lead the department, as well as lead the district, in the creation of lots of different curricular areas, in alignment of our curriculum K through 12, as our K through 8 leader, as well as our 9 through 12 leader. She's worked alongside me for my 10 years here as part of our leadership team, and I have been incredibly grateful for the insights and the support that she's provided our group as we've led through many changes over the last couple of years. Again, with our implementation of the IB program, Angela and a colleague of hers stepped up to the plate, got trained, has helped to lead that work in, in that program. She has taught AP art, she has taught a variety of different courses, and is always thinking and creating with students and inspiring them to pursue their own passions, and oftentimes helping them find their talent when that talent might not be so completely obvious to them. And she's turned on so many students to the study of art and to the love of all things art. So, congratulations, Angela, on 25 years. No, no, you gotta stay. All right, next, we have Joan Cass from our Special Education Department, and Joan is just one of those teachers that goes above and beyond in providing support for some of our most vulnerable students. Our students who often struggle in school, for our students who often struggle in school, spending seven hours a day, five days a week, 180 days a year can become daunting. And they will have highs and lows, good days and bad days, and no matter what is thrown at her, Joan is there to help support and to provide comfort for our students, to celebrate them in the moments when they've experienced something good, and to comfort them when they're experiencing challenges or having just a bad day. Joan also helps take care of all of us in the building. For many years, she has run our PIC program, which is our persons or people in community. It's our way of joining together as a faculty to celebrate one another, to comfort each other in times of sorrow, as well as to just come together in community. She has been a real champion of that and helped to bring us all together. And so, for all that you do, Joan, I just want to say congratulations on 25 years and thank you for all you've done for us. And last, for our 25 years, we have Allison Ferrier, or Ally, as we affectionately call her. And I'm gonna start with the way Ally signs off on her emails. There's not an email that you get from Ally that doesn't end with hugs, and I think that speaks to how she approaches this job or career that we call education. She puts her heart and soul into everything that she does, and she embraces everybody with hugs and with love, especially her students. In our English department, she has been an incredible contributor to all things that we've done in English, everything that we've ever revamped, particularly this past year when we've taken a look at our senior elective program and revamped that to become a program in which students could spend the last part of the year doing internships. Ally has been right there to help lead that work. Previously, she has been a department leader for the English department. She has stepped up to the plate to teach new courses, particularly, and more, most relevant in the, in the most recent last couple of years, she's implemented a course called Mindfulness Through Literature, in which she reminds our students all the time that in order to get through life and to be successful human beings, we have to be mindful of ourselves, our bodies, and our, our minds and our souls. And she leads students through some of that very important work, especially over the last two years, or now we can say three years. In addition to that, Ally has also been instrumental in our peer leadership program, which we train 9th, uh, sorry, 11th and 12th grade leaders within our building to help mentor our 9th graders coming in, and she's been an active part of that program for many, many years. And so much more that Ally just brings to our school every day, her spirit, her enthusiasm, and her passion. So, Ally, congratulations.
All righty. So, I have the last of our 25 years of service recognition here, and have the pleasure to ask, this is Stacy O'Connor, if she could come on up here, so. Hi, Stacey.
Hi.
I'm not sure this is gonna go.
I know.
Okay. I have hopes, I have hopes. Stacy, yeah, sure. So, Stacy and I have had, I consider it a pleasure, just most recently, we're working as members of the administration team at the central office level. And so, we've been able to do that for the last few years, with Stacy now leading the Director of Special Education. She also oversees our Advanced Learning Program, and most recently, our pre-K program in our schools. So, again, nothing has ever come Stacy's way that she doesn't either knock out of the park or make it happen, which I'm always amazed at how you do that, so.
Thank you.
Lots to learn. And before that, principal at Somers Intermediate School, and obviously, a lot of very close folks that you saw tonight, and I know I took a peek over you, and I saw you very, very proudly clapping for your teammates there, so thank you. And then before that, the assistant principal before that, and then kindergarten teacher at Primrose.
And then 5th grade teacher before.
Yeah, before that, okay.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, so I wasn't, I wasn't gonna keep going, but we can, we can, yeah, sure. So, what happened in the world, 25, no, I'm just kidding. No iPhones, none of that kind of stuff, so, yeah. So, the reality of thinking, I thought about the kindergarten piece, that's kind of what captured my attention. I think you came here as a kindergarten teacher, is that the first year?
I'm 5th grade first.
5th grade first, and then kindergarten, yeah. And so, thinking about the kindergarten, and being an elementary teacher myself, and thinking about life lessons that I can imagine that you taught and helped children experience and learn how to be together and laugh and cry together and all those things that kindergarten brings, and that brought me back to that, that kind of piece of writing I think we've all become a little familiar with about everything you need to know, you learn in kindergarten. And so, I thought, oh, okay, I know there's a couple of key pieces in there, so some of the things are things about, you need to share everything, you need to play fair, you need to go ahead and put things back the way you found them, I like that one in particular, so. Clean up your own mess, kind of a thing, right? And then say you're sorry when maybe you've, maybe you've hurt somebody. And then I thought about those things and thinking about taking that into kind of our, our adult lives and all that kind of stuff, and imagine what it could be like if, if we just kind of lived our lives like that. And I've had the opportunity to see you kind of live your life like that, as a colleague, as a friend, as a confidant, and treating each other with respect and always caring for each other, and when we do make missteps, kind of fixing that and working together as a team. The reality is, is that that's good for family, life, work, and so you've helped me understand that. And the reality is, no matter where you are, I think, in the world, that when you get out in the world and you're working this through that, the idea about holding hands and sticking together, and it makes me think about, I'm sure you had those kids holding each other's hands, walking through the hall. And I would have to say, I want to say thank you on behalf of the district and our colleagues for holding all of our hands and helping us walk together forward in whatever our challenges were. So, I think I love you as a colleague and as a friend. Congratulations for 25 years. All righty, so that will kind of end the first part of our celebrations today with our faculty of our 25 years of service, and next, we will shift to our retirees. So, I think we've got Anthony D'Amato's here this evening, and he's gonna go ahead and start us off, and then we'll have Jill, and then Chris, and then we'll move from there. Thanks, Anthony.
Thanks, Dr. Blanch, the board, thank you. Although I don't believe he's here tonight, I'd like to congratulate Scott Legato on his retirement. Scott was with the district for over 22 years, most recently as a head custodian in Somers Intermediate School. It was there that I worked closely with him, if only for a brief time, but in that time, I grew to enjoy our forthcoming professional sit-down conversations. Scott clearly cared very much about the job he did at SIS and even more for the staff that he managed. He was always an advocate for his team, which was a great quality in him as a leader. We wish the best for Scott in retirement and hope that he's enjoying his family as much as possible. We certainly miss his presence here. Congrats, Scott, and keep hitting those golf balls straight.
Hi, my name is Jill Weisman. I'm the Food Service Director for the district. Nice to meet everybody. Tonight's my honor to recognize Liz Casal and Dolly Maguire on their retirement from the Food Service Department. Coincidentally, it's also Dolly's 25th year of service. Neither are here tonight, but I'd like to congratulate them both. Although I've only been here a short while, it has been an absolute pleasure working with the both of these women. Their professionalism and dedication to this department has been admirable. They both welcomed me with open arms and made my transition into this district a smooth one. In their years here, both Liz and Dolly have fed an incredible amount of students. Food service is not an easy job, but they both made it look effortless to produce healthy and delicious meals, taking pride and care in the meals they prepared, often remembering names and preferences of students they served. Liz has been kind, enthusiastic, and driven since I met her. In my sort time here, she has overcome some crazy obstacles. This year was really hard, and still did it with a smile and a calm demeanor. She doesn't sweat the small stuff, and her creativity in the kitchen won't be hard to beat. I will especially miss the conversations we had and how her and I were able to troubleshoot and strategize so well together. Dolly has been a pillar in the district for many years. She has an incredible amount of knowledge and was always willing to put in the extra effort, sometimes working harder than she should have. She was supportive and generous with the students as well as the staff. Dolly has been out since the winter. I know our time together was brief, I learned a lot from her. I will miss her foresight, she was able to predict meal counts long before the events happened. Both of these women were true team players. They stepped up and worked alongside their team on a daily basis instead of managing them from a chair. When asked for some words about their managers, team members told me that Liz was a pleasure to be around, to work for. She made the work environment light with great conversation. She's an all-around nice and caring person. She has always been accommodating to the staff and students alike, and she'll be greatly missed. The staff said Dolly was a great boss and coworker, she was a friend and an excellent teacher, she felt like family and made them not dread coming to work. She cared much about the kids, and it showed. She'll be greatly missed as well. I congratulate them both and wish them the best in their retirement.
All right, so tonight, I have the pleasure to talk about Doreen Moorhead. She worked for the district for 10 years in the business office as a payroll clerk, and then eventually, a senior payroll clerk. Unfortunately, Doreen could not attend tonight. Prior to receiving the invitation for tonight's meeting, she had a trip booked to Florida. I tried to get her to cancel it, but it wasn't happening. So, when it came to payroll, she worked until the job got done. So when it came to payroll, she worked until the job got done through, no matter what the situation. Just some of those situations that she had to work through included power outages, snowstorms, microburst tornadoes, a pandemic, no matter what payroll needed to get processed. Doreen always came to work with a smile on her face. She worked with people throughout the district without issue, was respectful to anyone she was speaking with. Doreen was someone that I can count on day in and day out. She is missed by everyone in the business office and I wish Doreen nothing but the best in retirement.
So we're coming back around to Primrose and I'd like to have both of our retirees come down together because neither one of them likes the spotlight, so at least they have each other. So I'd like to recognize Felice Saracino and Sue Pond to come on down. This will literally kill them. But we can't let these lovely ladies go anywhere without saying and expressing our kind wishes from all of our colleagues. I'm gonna start with, in your program it says Felice Saracino. She is lovingly called Mrs. Signorelli by her students and with great affection and respect, just simply Fee by her colleagues. In 2006, Felice stopped subbing for Somers Central School District and took a chance accepting a position in an inclusive classroom at Primrose Elementary. In her recommendation, former administrator Kathy Mason stated that Felice, quote, "demonstrates the qualities we seek in a teaching assistant. She is patient and kind, aware of student needs, and described as a quick study," end quote. She nailed it. Those words are as true today as they were when Kathy Mason wrote them. I happened to meet Fee as the right hand to a special education teacher, Ms. Sheehy. Working amidst the smell of lavender and herb tea, she helped set a serene environment where students felt safe to take risks. Whether teaching foundations or PAF or a little bit of both, Felice delivered high-quality instruction that enabled each child to feel successful. From puppets and a makeshift treehouse to high-speed internet and Zoom, Fee and her partner tackled it all, even a pandemic. As she said farewell to her beloved sidekick, we promised her that we would find her the perfect teacher with which to partner in her following years at Primrose. We had no idea that what we would find her was a true match and a school daughter with whom she would share the teaching zone, as they like to call it, on a daily basis. From literacy to math to science, there is no subject that Felice will not support. When data needs to be collected, Felice is there. If a problem arises at recess and it needs to be solved, Fee will put on her coat and jump into action. Fee has worked under countless administrators and teachers to support a great many children whose parents will be forever grateful that she was there for their children. We will be forever grateful that she was here for all of us at Primrose. Wishing you the best in your next chapter, Fee. Sue Pond. I've been waiting all night. We are here to honor a very special and important part of our Primrose family, Sue Pond. She has been with us at Primrose for 18 years and has taken such great care of the youngest children of Somers, always with a caring hand and a smile. The day never stops for Sue. From checking heads for lice to runny noses, handing out snacks, Band-Aids, riding buses and forever providing a reassuring hug when it's needed. When a parent hears Sue's voice on the phone, their panic turns to comfort as they hear her say, "Everything's okay." We all thought that Sue was one of a kind and then came the pandemic. And it was in those pandemic moments that we knew they broke the mold when they made our Sue. With a second health room and regular COVID testing, Sue's office unfortunately became busier than Grand Central Station. Yet, she never looked flustered. She ran our test to stay as efficiently, is she making a face behind me? She ran our test to stay program as efficiently as the American Army Medical Corps, but with coloring sheets and crayons. So it was also enjoyable. We are going to miss you, Sue. But if anyone needs to kick off their sneakers and take a break, it's you. Wishing you the best of luck in retirement and happy travels to you and your family. Thank you, Sue. So at SIS, we actually have two retirements as well. And I'd like two very special women to come down, Kathy DeSantos and Anne Butera. It's a little cold. I'm privileged to recognize Anne Butera on her retirement from Somers Central Schools as a teaching assistant for the past 20 years. Anne began her career in Somers first as a substitute, then as a teaching assistant at Primrose, supporting our youngest learners. Then she moved to Somers High School with our older learners, and then SIS. Sorry SMS, you missed out on this one. Before joining us, she was a teacher in Mayapak and East Ramapo. Then she came to Somers, sent her two sons through the school district and joined us. She is a skilled teaching assistant who gives her students a variety of supports to meet their academic, social and emotional needs on a daily basis. At SIS, Anne has supported our learners as well as being an integral member of our staff and ensuring the safety of our students every day. When speaking with Anne's students, they describe her as amazing, kind and helpful. When speaking to the staff about Anne, they say she is one of the most genuine, kind and thoughtful people they've met. Her humor is appreciated constantly by her colleagues and she assists all of us on getting through the day with smiles on our faces. She is a ray of sunshine to all her students and colleagues as described by her teacher right now who she's working with. Each day, if you drop your students off at SIS, she greets every student with a smile and every dog with a dog treat. We are certainly lucky to have had Anne and wish her well in her fun and future endeavors as she learns to play the drum set that she's been waiting to learn. She has a new camera she'd like to become friends with because she's not getting along very well with the camera at the moment. And she wants to foster some, from some dogs. So we wish you well and we all miss you. Thank you for everything. And I'm very also proud and thankful to recognize Kathy DeSantos on her retirement as a teaching assistant from Somers. Kathy also began her career at Primrose, and then we just steal them, for 10 years before she moved to SIS. Kathy has a way of making the students she works with feel special, accomplished and successful. She has a bag of tricks with her that offers students a variety of strategies to support their academic, social and emotional needs on a daily basis. During our pandemic in the 2021-22 school year, Kathy stepped up and was an integral member of our e-learning team. Learning how to use Microsoft Teams and Zoom, she supported fifth grade students every day. In the eyes of her students, she is friendly, fun, funny, loving and smart. Building relationships and making everyone feel special is a strength of Kathy's and one of her proudest accomplishments at SIS. As Kathy looks forward to her retirement, when asked how she will spend her time in the next, once the next 11 days is over, all she sees is the smiling faces of her grandchildren who she plans to spend most of her time with. We are so lucky to have had her and wish her the best of luck. Thank you.
Hi, we are honored to recognize three retirees from Somers Middle School. I invite Jeff Chaplin, Denise Paulman and Diane Whistler to come down to the podium to join us. Like true middle schoolers are sitting in the back, yeah. Jeff wasn't able to make it this evening, but I'd still like to say a few words. Jeff was a longtime custodian at Somers Middle School, a super hard worker and he worked all three shifts. Morning shift, we had a midday shift for a while and he worked the evening shift. Loved catching up with him in the morning when he was on that morning shift. When I think of Jeff, I think of those long summer days that custodians put in, getting the school ready for kids to return and it's often hot in the building and Jeff was always there. And the question that always came from Jeff was, what do you need? What can I do for you? How can I make it work? He worked with several head custodians and several new guys kind of in the building and he was always friendly, helped the new guys learn the ropes and was really a mentor to younger and newer custodians. He's great to work with, funny, personable, always had a minute to ask about your family or check in, see how you were doing. He built strong relationships with the folks in the building and he felt immense pride for the condition of our building and I always appreciated that. I thank Jeff for all of his hard work and I wish him the best in retirement.
So I am gonna be talking about Denise Paulman, but I'm gonna take a minute to talk about both ladies because I joined the Somers team last year, middle of the pandemic, with the pleasure of supervising our SMS teaching assistants. And many a time did I lean on both of them for their just veteran experience, their knowledge of the school, community and culture and just their skillset. And I still do that and I may be texting them next year so that they can mentor and support me in supporting our students. So thank you both very much for that. So Denise Paulman is such an integral part of our SMS team. She's the first face that students see when they enter the doors from parent drop-off and she's there to greet them with a hello, how are you, checking in. But more importantly, she notices so many little nuances. She'll notice if a student looks down or something doesn't look right and she'll give us a heads up so that we can be on top of it and take care of our kids. She knows all of our kids and she greets them by name, which is such a fantastic way to enter your school building. She compliments them with a smile. She'll give them a little heads up if their shoe's untied and make sure that they're ready to go, start their day. Last year during COVID, we were so blessed to have our sixth graders in every single day and it was a great part due to our strong teaching assistant team. We hired a bunch of fresh, green teaching assistants so that we could keep our kids in two classrooms. And as one of the lead sixth grade TAs, we leaned on Denise to mentor and support and train those teaching assistants. Being a teaching assistant is kind of like being an academic ninja. You have to learn how to adapt and change and think on your feet every minute. And if you work with middle schoolers, that means that you have to do it like 70 or 80 times in a class period. And Denise does that with kindness and grace and she's persistent, continually supporting our sixth grade students and helping them in whatever challenges they needed. And she was adaptable and worked with us and supported them especially with their tech needs and was persistent in helping them to problem solve. As she's a true team player, she constantly checks in with my office. What can I do? What do you need? How can I help? Where can I cover? Where do you need me? And she will be flexible and change and I can text her, "Help, I need you here. I missed a class coverage. No worries Jen, I got it." And she'll take care of it with a smile and help and support our kids. She's a constant student advocate. Teachers are happy to have Denise as their counterpart because she knows her kids, she advocates for them and she supports them in the classroom. She's persistent with students. Middle schoolers need that. They need someone who's gonna be strong and supportive and be on top of them and help them, help encourage and navigate that. And our sixth grade kids get that with Denise. When they are matched up with Denise, they are gonna have that constant supporter, that cheerleader in their back, behind them and keeping them going throughout the year. So her partner teachers are devastated that she is lost. And I'm already having sad faces about who am I gonna put in there? When her partner teacher is absent, she jumps right in there and there is no loss of instruction because Denise knows what's coming and she can fill in her teacher when they return. So students are safe and supported constantly in our sixth grade team. It is a huge loss to our sixth grade team and culture to lose Denise to retirement. We know that she's gonna enjoy all of her time with her family and grandkids and all the wedding photos and everything. I'm gonna be so sad not to hear all about all those joys in the morning. So congratulations Denise.
Academic ninja is a new one, that was great. I'd like to talk a little bit about Diane Whistler, who has been working in the district for 15 years. She's been warning us for several that this day is coming and she finally kept to her word. She had many roles in the building, she's worked with all three grade levels, but her passion is really in ELA support where she helps our needy students. This year, she really jumped in and helped support our AIS reading classes with passion and energy as we revamped our program. She came with great suggestions for improvement and I know our AIS team felt that she was just an invaluable tool and really helped build that program this year. Diane learned how to support kids remotely during the shutdown and understood what they needed as we transitioned back to in-person learning. Diane is always about social, emotional learning, always thinking about the best thing for kids and has a watchful eye. And she knew that coming back from being home for so long that she was there to support them and really a mother figure at times. In the morning, Diane supervises our breakfast program. So she is another one of the early faces that kids see and she has such a good read on kids, such a great way for kids to start their day and their interactions with Diane. She has great relationships with students and other staff members, heart of gold. She looks out for our vulnerable students, but she also has a soft spot for some of our most challenging students. She's always sharing laughs, stories, pictures of her grandkids and most importantly, food, she makes a mean chili. Diane was always quick to volunteer her time for the Washington DC trip and her energy on that trip was fantastic. That trip can be a long three days. You're dealing with heat, rain, allergies, right? Long nights and eighth graders, right? Yeah. And she smiled, had fun with our students and made the trip a bit more enjoyable for everybody who attended. Diane raised her family in Yorktown and has a strong connection there. So we often tease each other about that Yorktown-Somers rivalry. And Diane, I know you bleed green, but you'll always be a Tusker to us. Congratulations on your retirement, thank you for everything that you do.
Okay, I have the privilege tonight of speaking on behalf of three individuals. Dr. Blanch is gonna join me for the last of those three who have all had a tremendous impact on the students and staff at Somers High School. Collectively, our three retirees have been educating students for a combined 100 years, nearly 65 of which have occurred in this district alone. Assuming an average of about 100 students per caseload per year, as well as one of those people being an administrator, we're talking about over 100,000 students in Somers alone who have been impacted by these individuals and positively impacted by their decision to go into education. So I think only one of our teachers is here, so I'm gonna call back up to the podium, Mary Cousys. So Mary is a really valued member of our Science Department. She joined us in Somers High School in 1997 as a chemistry teacher, and also taught biology for a short time, and for the last 25 years has made her mark as a beloved teacher of both biology, chemistry, and AP Chemistry. Mary is the kind of teacher that kids enjoy learning from. They affectionately call her Cous. Her classroom is warm and supportive, and it is a place where not only learning happens, but connections happen as well. They often take her class simply because she is the one teaching it, which has certainly been true in the AP Chemistry class. Students often will take chemistry not because it's their favorite subject, but when they leave Mary's class, it becomes one of their favorite subjects. Mary makes learning fun and helps to break down complex and often abstract concepts so her students can find success. Mary's been an asset to our Science Department and certainly leaves a big hole to be filled by those who she has actually mentored along the way, so we know that they are in good hands. I know they will proudly carry on the torch of Ms. Cousy's legacy. Mary, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for your 25 years of service to the Somers Central School District, and personally, thank you for all that you've done for Somers High School. Congratulations. And next, I'll speak about Mary Seebolt, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. Mary Seebolt has been a member of our Mathematics Department for the last 19 years after making a career change from the field of engineering. I believe she was a civil engineer prior to joining us. Since joining the staff at the high school, Mary has made incredible contributions to our math department, teaching a variety of courses over the years and working with a diverse set of learners. With her background in engineering, she quickly became the guru in many of our upper-level math classes, including precalculus and AP Calculus at both the AB and BC level. She pushes her students to excel and lets them know that she believes in them despite any challenges they might face with the learning of mathematics. Her students find success in their study of math due in large part to her faith in their ability, her passion for the subject, and effective instructional strategies. Mary has been a tremendous asset and a great teaching staff, a part of our teaching staff at SHS. We thank her for her 19 years of service and congratulate her on her retirement as she gets ready to move up north to Rhode Island. So congratulations, Mary. Our last person tonight that I'm going to actually share the comments tonight with Dr. Blanch. I've been waiting to do this for a while, although I really am not looking forward to the next part. So looking forward to roasting Mr. Catalino, but not looking forward to working without him. So I had to ask Roman today because I keep forgetting how many years he's been in education. So the total for that is 40, 19 of which have been here in Somers Central School District as our athletic director. We've been lucky to have Roman leading our athletic program for the last 19 years, and I've been incredibly fortunate to have him as a colleague and a friend for the past 10. Roman is not your typical athletic director, as his knowledge of our students goes well beyond our athletics program. He gets to know students from all walks of life and invests his time to form connections with them, regardless of whether they're an athlete or not. As AD, Roman works harder than most, working well into the evening to finish out games as well as on weekends and even during school vacations. His dedication to our district knows no bounds, and his genuine concern and care for our students is infinite. Roman is funny, witty, smart, and knows almost everything about every single sport we offer here at Somers High School, and he can talk to you about every single sport we have at Somers High School. He travels to tournaments, both big and small, cheers on whole teams who have made it to state championships, and a single player who has advanced to a final round in their sport. He is our student athletes' biggest fan, even when cheering them on quietly while following them on Twitter or on Local Live. I honestly can say that I cannot imagine what Somers High School is going to be like without Roman next year. He is a part of the very fabric of our school and our district. He is the go-to person for almost everything school-related, and he leaves behind him very big shoes to fill. And we know that Mr. Adams is going to have, he has a bigger shoe size than you, but he's going to have a hard time filling those shoes. Beyond championships and titles, Roman's success is measured in the lives of our student athletes and the ways in which they have learned, not only on the field, but also in our classrooms. It is undeniable that if you stack them all up, Roman has been one of the most successful 88 athletic directors in all of Westchester County, or for that matter, all of New York State. Congratulations, Roman. We will miss you.
I thought this was a roasting, so I guess I gotta change my paper here. Just give me a second. So 03-04 school year coming in, correct. 19 years of dedication and love for our athletes and families and kids, and a true Buffalo Bills fan confident. This is good. This is great. And 57 athletic seasons that you've been with our kids. One of the things I think about is just the idea of the support, and I know Mark spoke to it many times, the support, the guidance, the ability to work with our children on and off the athletic field. Something hit me very much right off the bat, as we've worked over the years together, about it's always about how can we support the student athlete. We talked tonight about our kids and everything like that, and they're children, and they make missteps, and we're there to support them all along the way, and I can't think of a person that's done that better, ever. And so the reality of that, and you've had three of my children that were athletes for you, and you've always guided them. They knew you as a person, and I thank you for that. As a father, as an educator, as a colleague, I thank you for that. The reality of sometimes why an athletic director? And I think you and I have talked many times about what athletic experiences do for our children. There's a lot of research that talks about the power of what athletics do for kids now and for the rest of their lives. Their ability to have them have a better understanding about themselves as individuals, their ability to be more empathetic, and their ability to go ahead and handle adversity. All those things we want them to have in life, and I know you've dedicated yourself to that. One of the things I'm interested in, though, before you go, is this whole idea about possibly a new sport. This academic ninja thing's got me going. I'm just wondering, just before you go, we can maybe surprise Mr. Adams, say we got an idea. So I know we're bringing up bowling next year and things like that, but you know, academic ninja's got some power there. One of the things, Roman, I remember, we had a chance, kind of as I started working together in the beginning, to bring together some student athlete leaders, and we kind of identified as that our assault group, you know, student athletic leadership team. One of the things we had walked them through and kind of had a conversation about, kind of this idea about a creed, a Tusker creed, so I went and grabbed that tonight. I wanted to share that with you, and it made me think actually so much about you as I went through this and all the times that you've demonstrated this together. So I'm going to just share this with you. Champions never give up. Champions put team first. Championships are humble. Champions are motivated and determined. Champions respect the game and the opponent. Champions are honest with themselves and with others, and champions work out their weaknesses until they become their strengths. Champions know they must learn to serve before they can lead. Champions have and understand the impact on their integrity. Champions are forwards through adversity and determination. Champions relentlessly pursue excellence. Champions get up more times than they get knocked down. Champions give all, no matter the score. Champions are good sports on and off the field. Champions are always team players. Being a champion is leading with courage, mind, body, and spirit. Practice like a champion, play like a champion, live like a champion. While I don't know, in our younger years, your athletic prowess as a player on the field of competition, how you practice, but I can tell you I know how you live like a champion. I've been there beside you for the last 12 years. I've seen you embody every single one of those pieces of how to be a champion. And I would say that you absolutely live like a champion, and you've set a model for myself, as well as my children, and as well as the children of this district. So thank you, Roman, for everything you've given. Love, blood, sweat, and tears to these children. Thank you, Ms. Catalino.
Mic check.
Five minutes and we're on.
Mic check.
I'll try.
Nancy said 10, I said 5.
All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and start the board meeting here again, so please don't forget cookies on the way out.
Bring them home for your families.
All right. All right, Paul, so we're back on live. So again, thank you, Board, for us taking the evening here tonight, a good portion of it, but to recognize our students and our 25-year retirees, as well as our folks who are our 25-year service and our retirees. So we had to move forward with any public comment, I guess, from the first part?
Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Suddenly, the room got really big. Okay, with no public comment and special recognitions done, we will move on. Flip through these. Okay, moving on to the code of conduct, to a public hearing for the code of conduct policy changes. So this is a first read.
I forgot, because I know he came in a little late, and then I forgot he's here, so. So he'll be back momentarily. And then Mr. Godati, he's going to be up next in just a second, so yeah, we'll go there. Thanks, Mr. Godati. That'd be great, Kevin. If you're okay, we can spin a little bit more now that we were kind of had it spun around before. So if you want to shift that podium a little bit to your left?
I was going to talk to the empty room, but okay. I just wanted to note, Mr. Demato is working on the air conditioning.
And so just as Joe comes down, just as a reminder for the board that tonight, the intent is for a first reading tonight for the policy that we've gone through a number of subcommittee meetings, and then when we meet in at the end of the month, we'll go ahead and come bring that back for our second reading and our public hearing hopefully adopted at that point in time. So we'll go ahead and go there. So thank you, Kevin. I know you had a couple of questions that came your way, and we'll just open it up to the board if that's okay.
Right, okay, sure. And I wasn't sure if we were going to do that because I know we have the public hearing, and then it comes up again as a first read later on in the agenda.
So this is just a public hearing?
Just the public hearing right now. Okay, so not Kevin yet, right?
Do we want Kevin yet or not?
He could talk about it.
That'd be great if you'd.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah. And then we'll do the public hearing.
Sure. So thank you for the commentary. If you'd like, I'm happy to respond to some of the questions that we got from the board.
That'd be great if you had a few of those, Kevin. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Sure. First, thanks for taking the time to read through. I know it's quite a lengthy document. Dr. Blanch talked a little bit about the process that we went through to get here. It did go through multiple iterations with multiple eyes on it, but the more people that look at it, the better, for sure. So thanks for taking the time to do that. There are a couple of things that were pointed out in some of the questions that came my way prior to this that we'll be making some edits on. They're just kind of typographical errors and transposition errors. Specifically, in the preamble to the code of conduct, there's a piece there that reads that no student shall be subject to, and certainly that intent, the intent of there is to read individual to do that, and so there's kind of an audit of some of that language we need to look back through and make sure we make the change. With regard to some of the questions that we got specifically about the behavior infractions chart that we have, I wanted to address specifically, there was a question about some of the behavior interventions and why that specifically, for example, under the sexual harassment area of behavior violations, there was a question as to why certain behaviors are listed in comment sections, it's not as behavior. And the reason for that is actually there's a regulation that is on file with the, it's the acceptable use policy that we have for technology that specifically stipulates actions that are being taken when inappropriate content and media is accessed through our technology devices, which is typically the way that we, that comes through, and we're following the regulation on that. That regulation's 4526R, and I can of course summarize this for you as well. So the thought process there was to, there's a link in the comment section on the behavior violation linking to that regulation that we have as well. So it's trying to not make sure that there's redundancy in that as well. You look confused. What can I clarify?
Having a hard time. Everybody else is having a hard time hearing.
I am, but yeah.
Oh, sorry. I don't know if you can get the mic up. The speaker's right in my ears, so sorry. It's very loud to me.
Kevin can hear himself really well, so that's good.
I can, yeah. And Jill, can you hear me? Jill can hear me, okay. So sorry, I'll, much better?
Summarize, Kevin.
Your audience is here.
And now I'll start all over.
We are the only audience for you.
Joe wants to make sure you repeat all of it.
Yeah.
Starting from the beginning.
He's just kidding.
So there was a question that came about the sexual harassment pieces of the behavior violations, and there was a question specifically about, in the comments under sexual harassment, again, this is part of the disciplinary infractions chart, there's a clause about pornography in there. That clause is, there's a specific clause within the 4526R regulation, which is our acceptable use policy, that stipulates the use of district technology is to be used for educational purposes only, and there's language in there that relates specifically towards pornography. So the question was, why is that not broken out more in the behavior violations? And the reason for that is because it's present within that separate regulation that's in there as well. It's something that, I appreciate the question coming forward as well. It's frankly something that we could certainly reconsider and take a look at, but there is a coverage in there within that 4526R that has language specifically about the presence of pornography as inappropriate use of digital technology as well. If it's all right, I'll also move on. There was an error that the board found that they came forward as well with. Specifically, it was that in, there's two sections of the behavior infractions chart that reference tobacco. It's just an oversight on our part. One of those sections references a Level 1/2 offense, which is in classroom and then escalating to an in-classroom with the potential conjunction of administrative support. And then in another area of that infractions chart, it's listing the possession of tobacco as having a 3/4 intervention, meaning escalating to administration, building or district administration first. Those two need to be collapsed into one, so that's a little change that we'll be making as well. Thanks for, but there are two different sections of the chart. It's just an oversight that we saw. There was a question also that came to me about under the weapons and firearm sections of the chart. Specifically, the chart has a note that says weapons must be present. The, if you notice on that, first of all, any possession or any assumption or anything having to do with weapons requires the involvement of the SRO as well, as indicated by the red dot on the right side of that chart as well. So I want to be clear that anything that is made that uses the word weapon does involve our SRO as well. You'll notice under the threatening conduct as well, the reason it says a weapon must be present is because that's stipulating the behavior, the actions that will be taken if a weapon is present, if found to be present. If the weapon is not found to be present, that behavior falls under threatening conduct, which also involves the SRO and also carries that. which also involves the SRO and also carries that level three and four as well. It's just parsing out if a weapon is found versus if a weapon is not found. You'll find that both of those require a level three, four, and the involvement of the SRO in that, in that as well. So, that's the reason why they're parsed out, because the, the, the thought process there is, an allegation of a weapon doesn't necessarily mean that there is one, but it does, regardless, it does require the involvement of our SRO and does require the involvement of building and district administration in those cases. But there are cases where, you know, the allegation of a weapon might be unfounded, in which case, we wanna make sure that there's, we're clear on what the actions will be taken in both those cases.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
There's a reason for that. And the last, last, final thing I wanted to reference is that it does, it does reference that the board will sponsor an in-service education program for involving the staff in, in engaging meaningfully in the, in the Code of Conduct. That's not the exact language, but that's the spirit of it. And so, the plans are underway to meaningfully engage the staff in the beginning of, in the opening of our school year during our professional learning time in the changes that are happening in the Code of Conduct across there, but we've gone a little bit further than that as well in ensuring that that, this faculty will be involved in, in learning about the Code of Conduct and their, their, how it impacts them in each of their, their crafts, but also making sure that our students are meaningfully engaged in this as well. It is the Code of Conduct of community and support, and students play a valuable role in this as well. In fact, just today, there was a meeting at the administrative level talking about that process and what that will look like and how we translate this into real actions for the, for the staff to digest. And the next step of that, upon the adoption of this, is to talk about and start making plans for getting our students meaningfully involved in the beginning of school, in, in engaging in reading and understanding this. Again, process-wise as well, this Code of Conduct as a policy, you know, kinda gives the opportunity for each of the buildings to start revising their individual student handbooks, which is really what, what this gets translated, translated to, and there'll be consistency within the student handbooks, specifically in the behavior violations area, the dress code area, the things that we've changed under this from last year to this year. And it's those handbooks that the individual students will be engaged with as well. So, I don't wanna give the impression that, say, an intermediate school student will be presented with the Code of Conduct as you've seen it right now. It will be translated into developmentally appropriate language as each of our student handbooks are. So, that's the next, the next step of this process, is to translate it and then continue on planning and making sure our teachers are engaged in the beginning of the school year as well as our students.
So, Kevin, I have a question about that behavioral violations chart. I noticed as you called out that the, that the dot at the very end for SROs is either red or black.
Yes.
And red is that the SRO must be called, and black is that it may be called.
Correct.
So, just for the sake of fairness and equity, who makes that judgment call about "may"? And is there any way we can further delineate it to make sure that it is the same across all of the potential violations?
Yeah, so, the first part about that, earlier on, prior to the section that has the actual infractions chart to it, there's some language in there that talks about kinda the environmental factors that are considered when determining the appropriate behavioral response. Basically, what are, what's the context of the scenario? And it's those nuances that really determine whether or not an SRO, it's required for an SRO to be involved. And so, when the, the SRO may be called dot is there, it's those things that are stipulated prior to that that are considered typically by the, the administrators and the, and staff members that are involved in that to make that determination. If there is ever a question as to whether or not, like, hey, this is kind of a borderline case, maybe we should or shouldn't, one of the values, one of the benefits we have here in Somers is that there's an SRO in every building, and so, the default there would be, of course, to involve them as a precautionary thing. That's the answer to the question as to how do we determine in a "may" situation whether or not we should or not as we consider those, the contextual variables there.
Do you have a list of those contextual variables?
Not as a individual, every single thing that's considered, but there is a listing ahead of that. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, but earlier on, maybe the page or so before, it says there is a listing of the things that are considered when determining the appropriate behavioral responses, and that's meant to kinda broad-brush the things that are considered in there, because each situation does vary and is different, and we need to kind of allow for the variation of the specific situation to come through.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
A while back, a couple meetings back, we talked about the use of recordings.
Yes.
In a classroom, and I apologize, I skimmed through it, so it may be in there, but did we add anything of that language, right? The use of recordings and taking that and socially or using that outside of school to humiliate or, you know, put down an individual?
Yeah, specifically in, again, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up in just a minute. There, there is stipulation in the, I believe it's under the fighting area as well, specifically that stipulates recording of a fight as well. I think that language is in the behavior piece as well.
Kevin, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna, and I saw that there was a piece near inappropriate use of social media recording or publishing a fight.
Yep.
That is specifically laid out in. And that's new, right? Because we. Yeah, yeah.
That is new, yes.
I had another question. Do we, so, we have, there is something on parents, as kind of what they're responsible for, as where attendance goes and things like that. I don't know if it belongs in here or not, but have we thought about anything as far as parents' behavior at, you know, sporting events and how they're representing, you know, our community or our student athletes and/or how they should be engaging with coaches? So, I haven't thought specifically about the, the student code of conduct. We can't certainly cross over. There is an athletic code of conduct that's there for the student athletes as well as the families too, so we can certainly follow up and connect with Mr. Haddam as he comes onboard to look at that. I believe there is some expectations out of interface with coaches and things like that, yes. Yeah, okay. It's in the student athlete code of conduct, basically. It is, okay.
And it would fall under our civility policy to some degree, too.
Certainly, our civility one and proper, most connected, there's a little, there's definitely more detail in there with the coaches piece there and the student athlete code of conduct, because there are things there that can be placed in a student athlete code of conduct, because it's a privilege to be a part of, of our extracurricular activities, so there are some things that you could put in there beyond what you need to put in here. So, we can certainly follow up with Mr. Haddam as he comes onboard. Yeah, maybe, I mean, I could just read that then. Yeah, we can get that, too, and I, I know he actually has some thoughts about putting adjustments in there, I was ready to, so. All right, great. Good timing. Thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Kevin. Thank you, sir.
So, at this time, we open up for a public hearing on the Code of Conduct. If there are any public comments. Can you come up to the microphone?
Not directly, what Kevin was saying. Is it okay if I'm not, it's not directly having to do with this?
If it, well.
It's code.
It's a hearing on the Code of Conduct, so if it's about the Code of Conduct, that's fine.
I don't know the whole Code of Conduct. Maybe I should wait.
Okay.
I'll wait.
All right. Thank you. We'll try to get through everything quick for you. Okay, so, then, we would move on. The next item is the approval of meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of the minutes of the meeting of May 3, 2022, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Next item is the personnel consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, next item, the CSC and CPSC meeting recommendations. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of the recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And business consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion?
Maybe Chris can just briefly explain that $8 million number, how it comes out.
So, yeah, the, this is for the lease purchasing, lease purchase financing for the energy performance contract that the voters approved last May or the previous May. Goes pretty, time goes pretty quickly. So, this is one of the last steps before we can begin construction for that project. And again, just large ticket items. Boilers are being replaced in three of our buildings and all the lighting in the district and a lot of other energy efficient enhancements throughout the district. So, this is just the authorization for the financing, and then the closing will be at the end of this month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I see we also have additional donations?
Yep, we continue to receive donations for the James J. Farina Fourth Memorial Scholarship, and that has brought that total number of donations up to over $83,000.
Wow.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
All right, and next item is the budget results. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby accept the results of the May 17, 2022 annual budget vote and trustee election as per attached?
So moved.
Second.
Congratulations to the trustees, to Chad and to.
Ife.
Amanda.
Ife, for your reelection and for Amanda and Amanda. Yes, sorry. I'm tired. And, and, you know, and thank you to the community for passing our, our budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. And next item is the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association budget for 2022-23. Be it resolved that the Board of Ed of the Somer Central School District hereby approves the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association proposed 2022-23 budget and executive board nominating slate as per attached and instructs the district clerk to complete the ballot on its behalf?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Reorganizational meeting date. Whereas in Union and Central School Districts, the reorganizational meeting must be held on the first Tuesday in July, and alternatively, a school board may, by resolution, decide to hold the annual reorganizational meeting at any time during the first 15 days in July. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Ed of the Somer Central School District hereby sets the date of the reorganizational meeting for the 2022-23 school year as July 12, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Next item is the SSRP Side Letter of Agreement Summer Hours. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and empowers the superintendent of schools to execute the Side Letter of Agreement dated May 26, 2022, between the district and the Somer's school-related professionals' full-time unit, giving clerical employees the option of a shortened week during the summer, and that the superintendent is hereby authorized to take all action necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Next item is the Girls' Ice Hockey Team merger for 2022 and '23. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Ed of the Somer Central School District does hereby approve the merger of the Varsity Girls' Ice Hockey Team of Somer Central School District, Clarkstown South High School and Scarsdale High School for the 2022-23 season as per the merger application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a big swath of sort of districts to smoosh together.
It is, yeah.
Do we have a lot of interest in that? We, we don't, that's why we, we need to go. Well, I mean, obviously not the whole team, but I mean, just even some participation. Yes, there's, there's enough for us to, to do that. Same with our boys' hockey team. This is a relatively new one, but we've been doing the boys' for a bit, so.
But Clarkstown is across the river and Scarsdale's pretty far south. Like, that's a big.
It's a long trip for them.
And they're all coming up to Booster?
Yeah.
So, is it, these are the only school districts that had?
Opening, as well as a need and an interest to participate.
Okay.
They're phenomenal districts, by the way.
Yes, we are, and they're too.
We all are.
Yes. Okay, and just making sure there were no opposed or abstained?
No.
No.
All right, and then the policy first reading. This was for the Code of Conduct. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District does hereby open the, hereby accept the following policy for first reading, 5300, the Code of Conduct?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, and this brings us to public comments. Jill, you are up.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jill Shands. I just wanted to congratulate everybody for all the recipients, students and adults and teachers, for all their honors and awards tonight. It was really something special. I had tears in my eyes with every award. So, this has to do with the conduct. I'm not specifically sure if it's the Code of Conduct, but it's about conduct. I'm extremely passionate about what I have to say, and I'm also a little bit teary-eyed about it. I apologize for bringing up this critical need tonight, especially after all the beautiful celebrations today. This is a little bit of a sad thing. But I did not want this school year to end without me publicly making a comment about something that I feel so strongly about. So, what it is I feel strongly about is all acts of aggression, violence, and hatred that take place anywhere in the Somer School District, which usually, most likely, I would say, stem from feelings of sadness, pain, hurt, loneliness, and exclusion, must be addressed with restorative justice. And teaching children to communicate with each other, to hear each other, to restore respect, responsibility, and relationships. I feel really strongly, if we don't put this restorative justice piece in action with every infraction that takes place, we'll be missing many students that we don't even know about, who are filled with pain, who are sad, who are lonely, and excluded, and there are many of them here. And God forbid, we miss the wrong student that's feeling any of these things that can't be missed, we're all gonna feel really sorry for it. So, I just feel strongly that we need to empower our children, all of our children, our adolescents, to speak, to be heard, and to communicate and resolve issues together. Very strongly about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Board, if it's okay, just bring your attention to the Code of Conduct, or Kevin's team, there, 5300 dot point four. I'll just read really briefly. The Somer Central School District is committed to restorative approaches. An integral component of progressive discipline. Restorative approaches can be used both as prevention and intervention measures. The most critical function of restorative practice is restoring and building relationships. When used as an intervention measure, taking a restorative approach to discipline changes the fundamental questions that are asked when a behavior incident occurs. Instead of asking who's to blame and how those engaged in the behavior, misbehavior will be punished, a restorative approach asks key questions such as what happened? Who was harmed or affected by the behavior? What needs to be done to make things right? And how can people behave differently in the future? And what can be learned from this experience? So, again, just give you an example of that, and that is woven in through the Code of Conduct. A significant movement and change from where it was previous, again, that, that team has been working on there. So, I just wanted to share that with you, because that's an important, important feature in there.
Thank you, yes, I noticed that as one of the changes. And then I know, and there was training in restorative practices. Actually, you were training people to then turnkey training within the district.
Turnkey training, correct.
Right, that has happened too, so the work will continue.
And continue, yes.
So Ray, could you speak a little bit to how we are assessing how well we're, we're doing this work? Right, because it feels, I mean, like all work, it's, there's subjectivity to it. And I'm just curious to know, how are we going to make sure that we're enacting this correctly or with fidelity and actually being able to meet every student in our district fairly?
Yeah, and part of that, and I think that's where Kevin started to talk about that a little bit this evening, where even today was a second or third meeting with a group of individuals identifying now, how do you take that and put that into practice? So at the building level, how can you identify what that looks like at the, each elementary and the middle and high school level into a practitioner's usage of, of that looking like? And so is that a classroom-based intervention piece that's specifically there? Or is it perhaps at an administrative level at the building, or does it come to the district level? So that's the operational piece that they're really, quite frankly, we're starting to work on right now. And then I try and identify, how can we go ahead and ensure that, and tracking some of those restorative practices that were happening? So that, that's really basically shifting now to the operational side with practice and theory and research being in place and embedded. Now to start shifting that operationally here in the coming months of the fall, the team is ready to start putting that into practice. That's how we'll be looking at those schools. And frankly, it's a, it's a, it's a baseline for us to start, because it is, it is more about the way we practice of how we're doing this, but it's really about how can we track this more directly on students? And so the recidivism hopefully will not be as much of things, and we can hopefully demonstrate that things that take place and the missteps that do happen, that we can have to be restorative, as Jill was saying before, that, that's the, the intent, is to, you heard the community, and how can we go ahead and reestablish that? Be it from our kidding our first and secondary classrooms restorative practices, and here's our classroom community, and how to bring that up.
How, how are you, do you have plans in place to sort of bring in caregivers in the community to get feedback from the parents of students to make sure that we are applying these practices equitably, fairly, equally?
Yeah, so again, I would say that's kind of some of the next evolution of the part of the operational committee that sits underneath seat that took this on as their first kind of bite into this in this year, and I think.
There were students on that committee, right?
Yes, yep, yep. And there's parents on the committee as well, too, so it gives us a first chance to get there now. That will kind of evolve into their next evolution of their work as they'll look at twenty-two and twenty-three work.
Thank you.
So now, like, in the fall, will the committee come back and with their findings and how they're going to implement that?
In the fall, there will be the work of the committee to identify really, how can we, as, as Lindsay was saying, how do we track or monitor or now put this in practice? So that'll be the work of the team, the twenty-two, twenty-three, because there'll be no data set from this year, because it's.
Yeah, yeah, no. But they'll come back with what they're finding, what their plan is to go ahead and.
Kevin, Kevin would be able to share that out and say, here's now as we operationalize that, and certainly in our, our dashboards on Fridays, it will update you with and certainly let you know what that team identifies as they establish their new goals for twenty-two, twenty-three on that subset of the operational specific to Code of Conduct.
Nick, do you mean what plans they have in place to collect data while they're implementing this, so that we're reaching out to the caregivers?
Once they've implemented it, you know, once they have the plan, they're going to, I mean, they're going to sit down, let them, give them some time to go ahead and evaluate, you know, how to do this, but you know, once they've done that and said, okay, great, here's how we're going to implement it in each one of the schools, here's how we're going to track it, but just return back to the, the board table or the community to show, you know, okay, great, here's what we found, right, from doing all this.
Yeah, Nick, and that's one of the first pieces, I know, that we have worked on some internal consistency metrics, K through twelve, that we'd like to bring now as a, of a good enough to criticize kind of thing to the committee when they reconvene in the fall. So here from a practitioner's lens, from the administrative team and those folks who are looking at the responses to the situation that may arise now, working with the parents and the members of the seat committee to get some feedback on that, say, this is what we're seeing, because we certainly were seeing variance between our schools, K through twelve. And so how can we now kind of shore that up and really clear in our communications? And if this is a violation of the Code of Conduct, let's make sure it's seen the same across all four of our schools. And then what's the development, the appropriate response in those four schools? So that's the part we're really taking the, now truly operationally is that for the administrators in the schools and staff and teaching staff as well, because many things will stay and as they should in the classroom, with classroom management and behavior. So those elements, again, I would say, just from a quick look at those, many things came out of the classroom that I would say should be staying in the classroom as classroom behavioral management, things that should be able to be addressed in the classroom proper. When it comes out, that's where we want to make sure that then we're tracking that consistency along the way, the, the give and take of any classroom period that goes back and forth, that, that should be part of the learning experience. So that's a piece that we'll be hopefully seeing coming forth more consistently, clearly across our four schools, what is and that stays in the classroom and how's that managed? And then when it comes out, making sure we'll be able to track that by, you know, students, age, grade, all those kinds of things.
It would be great if we could have some sort of caregiver, parent-facing survey or some way to collect their feedback, not just from the seat committee, but folks maybe that don't have time to be on the seat committee, don't know about it, aren't, aren't participating, so that if they have a child who's had some of these restorative practices or has seen it, they can give feedback, right, without having to commit to being on the committee or.
And that's certainly something we can get that information back to committee and ask how that they would like to gain some of that information again.
I'd love to see that.
Our, our children and our numbers of violations of the Code of Conduct are not so astronomical out there, so it's, it's much more about handling those on a very individualized basis. Family as much as we can in the classroom is the target, restore the classroom community that perhaps was impacted and things like that. But there are certainly ones, and certainly that can be an opportunity for our seat committee to reach out in one way or another and say, hey, just want to see how this change we've gone through is impacting you. Because the intent is to have them feel cared, connected to the community. And again, as Kevin mentioned before, even the title of it is changing to caring connections versus just Code of Conduct and stuff. So that's a piece we're trying to, that's the intent, make it there.
All right, so we are moving on to board member comments. I'm going to start off the board member comments. We have one more recognition for tonight. So Jill, hopefully you'll be with us for our meeting on June twenty-eighth, and this isn't the last time you're sitting at the board table with us. But I want to thank you very much for all your years of service. You've been, it's been a pleasure working with you. You've helped challenge all of us in our perspective and our thoughts. We've had great dialogue and great conversation as we've moved through the district, and I learned a lot from you, and thank you.
Who's going to heckle Kevin now?
I know.
I know.
Claire says she'll, she'll take up the torch.
I'll think of you on late Tuesday nights. All right, are there other, our board member comments?
I'll go. So continuation of that, yeah, Jill, thank you, going to miss you, you know, expect to see you in the audience every Tuesday night, though. But, no, thank, yeah, as a new board member, right, you, you did spend a lot of time with me and helped guide me and, you know, kind of just the ropes, what to look for, what to expect, so you're very, very helpful, so thank you very much for that. Um, so I think it was fun. Can we have more meetings like this? I know it was fun actually just seeing, congratulating all the teachers and everybody for, you know, the, the service of twenty-five years, also some of the retirees. You know, sad to see some of them go, but very well, you know, put together, too, and it was very nice things from the administration, what they had to say about everybody and how personalized it was, so that was very good. I thought it was also great seeing the, the students come up, the, the student athlete awards, and, you know, hearing about, was it, correct in the stat, was every one of our sports had the student athlete honors, right? So that's, I, I think, something to, you know, recognize as an overall district. Not only are our students actually doing well, getting to section championships, but they're actually all keeping up with their studies at ninety percent of, or above of the team. So that was a good, fun night.
Thank you, I mean, I'll echo the same. Thank you so much, Jill, for your mentorship and your leadership and your partnership for the last five years for me, so thank you for that. Yeah, and I love acknowledging teachers. I think, you know, what a job to be in, especially at this time. And when I think what teachers who've done twenty-five years and retired, that's one thing, and there are teachers who are doing twenty-five years and still have more years to do, that's pretty phenomenal. And I think, when I think about true service, that's what I see, teachers, so kudos to everyone who supported them.
Yeah, so following up on your comment, Nick, I think about the district mission and vision of whole child, right, like fostering the whole child, not just academic, not just social, not just emotional, but all of them together. And the students that we had show up tonight who, who were athletes and scholars together, it really, I don't know, it was really pretty compelling to me, and every year it is. The past couple of years were really hard. And so sitting at the table tonight for the last time, or second-to-last time, with this guy right over here is, is like hitting me a little bit, because I've learned a bunch from you, Jill. I mean, truly, we've had some, we've had some banter, my friend. But I think if there's anything that we've learned over these past couple of years, you know, if you would have asked us going in, what's going to happen, I would say, oh, we're going to be really hard after, after this awful experience. But I think, at least for me, and maybe for you and for lots of us, it's made us sort of softer, and it's made us more grateful. And so I'm grateful for you, and I'm grateful that you push back on me, and I'm grateful that you give me the space and the grace to learn and grow. And I hope the rest of the district and the rest of the community can see what a valuable asset you've been to our board. I'll miss you. Anyhow, thank you.
You know, it's really been a privilege and honor to serve for the last nine years. But, you know, there comes a time when you know it's, it's time to leave, and I, I felt that this is, is my time to leave. Ife, God bless him, wants to continue to serve. But what, you know what I, I've learned? I've learned so much about our town, I've learned so much about education. I feel as though I've contributed. I mean, my mission coming in, in a lot of ways, I had certain objectives, as we all do. I feel as many of them have, have been fulfilled, and if they've not been fulfilled, we're on the road to those objectives. We have had disagreements over the last couple of years at this table, no question about that, but unlike, I think, the community, some parts of the community at large, they haven't risen to the level of being personal. I think we all have respected each other and liked each other despite our differences. And, you know, it, it pains me to see members of our community, you know, attack some of us on the board. I mean, I've had the privilege of being attacked by both from the right and the left, so it's been quite an honor. I've also been complimented by the right and the left, which is more of an honor. I, I think that the, the district has persevered, I, I compliment, again, our administration and our teachers for all they've done. One thing I do find disappointing, too many people get behind this, this thing here, and they type, you know? But then when it's time to do something, where are a lot of them? Where are they? They here sitting here now? Do they come out and comment? No. They're unhappy with the way things are running. Did many of them step up and put themselves out there to run? No. And that's unfortunate. And if anything, that's one of the things I find that disappointed me. The other side of that, though, is there was so much that inspired me. And there's been so many children that have benefited from what has gone on in this district, and I think there's so many adults that have benefited from being around the children in this district. It's, you know, there, there's good, there's bad, and there's neutral. And in the district, we've had all of that. I think that I choose to focus on the good, but I recognize the bad and the neutral. And I've learned a lot, I've grown a lot, and I hope I've contributed a lot, and I thank you all for all you've done for me. Thank you.
Jill, thank you for sitting next to me for nine years, okay? Particularly appreciate your big screen sometimes, I have to look at your screen. And you raised the question, which is a very good question, and why you are still running or serving for the school board. I have answered, but partially I worked out the answer, but partially I have to continue, okay? I'll tell you why. First of all, when you serve on the school board, you have so many privileges, just like tonight, you get to meet all the athletes or winning, you know, champions, whatever, scientists and so on. It makes you feel good, makes you feel young, okay? And you also get to congratulate with all these long services, okay, the teachers, the staff, so on. And you have, you know, these retirees, many of them taught my kids, all of them. These are rewards that keep me going, so fifteen years seems to be long, but somehow just, just passed. But I do have, sometimes do have questions like you said, well, why are you still running? One of the questions is actually related to these, the universe, the school operation and teachers come and then retire. Often people ask me, well, why we are having so many turnovers, particularly this month, okay? We've got graduations, we've got this retirements, we've got these, you know, celebrations, so on. In fact, this meeting is most watched meeting in Somers. I bet you if you ask people, have you watched the school board meeting on video? They say, no, perhaps only occasionally you watch is this one, because this one is more meaningful. You've got all these awardees and retirees and so on, okay? And I was often asked by this question, why you have so many people turnover? I said, yeah, that's a good question, I should have, you know. I've been spending many years trying to solve this problem with a mathematic solution. Partially I worked out. It's not that hard from the sort of assumption level, but solution level at the end is a little harder, requires higher math. First of all, let's say we have a student body of twenty-five hundred, and a classroom maximum twenty-five students, in fact, we'll try to reduce them. So you've got at least hundreds of teachers, right? Minimum. And a hundred teachers of a course, you know, average age, easy for mathematical handling. Let's say assuming they are, you know, average couple of years apart, averaging from twenty-five to fifty-five, whatever. So four or five per year age. And since we have to graduate out of twenty-five hundred students, right, every year, that many student goes, the teachers, also with the years, a few teachers would retire, right? The services, you know, maximum probably people will serve fifty years, but normally we don't expect people really work that long. Sometimes, you know, even thirty, twenty-five, they retire. So you do expect this more people, you know, if you say twenty-five hundred students, you have hundred to two-hundred teachers, you have four to eight teachers graduate along with the graduate students, right? So that's pretty much simple math. But try to put that in a formula and worked out, that is the problem. I've been trying to do that, you know, tried different method, but it's tough. Then I realized, the superintendent job is tough. He has to handle this every year. He has to figure out, this many goes, this many have to hire in. So he works hard, I don't have to solve that problem, okay? Thank you. That's the reason I keep serving, and I will support my Dr. Brunch. How's that?
Very good. Yes, you bring a very good point. Sometimes it's really hard to quantify people and make it all into a formula. And I will say, that's one of the things that had impressed me in Somers, I think even before I had come on the board, but I noticed it especially when I'm on the board, the number of staff that we actually have that stay a long time. I think our retention rate seems great. Having worked in other school districts and known other school districts, you know, where I have, where I know other people that are working that had large numbers of staff that leave because they're not happy. And when I look at our agendas and when I see staff that are leaving, almost always it's they're moving, or it's a family situation, or they're retiring, you know, like, or they're getting, they're, they're moving up to administration, you know, taking a promotion kind of thing. So, you know, I think kudos to you that generally speaking, it seems like we have some good longevity and people want to stay, and we have some continuity. And so it is exciting tonight to celebrate so many staff that have been with us for twenty-five years, you know, and, and so many retirements, I'm excited for them, and always sad to see people leaving us. You know, it's a great night. It's, it's always wonderful to see our valedictorian and our salutatorian and see so many students recognized for such a myriad of talents, and we only captured a little bit of it tonight. That's one of the things I had talked a little bit about with Ray when we were planning this, you know, how do we capture in these meetings every, all the different ways in which our students are talented? So it was great to hear the science research, and I was glad this year I was able to go and attend the science research symposium, and it's just amazing when you look at what those students are able to do and how they talk. Some of them get up and some of the seniors got up on stage, and as they're conversing us, it's like you're looking at, you know, somebody that's come out with a PhD and ten years of work experience, you know, right over my head what they were talking about, and with such confidence. So very impressive that, and our music programs, and, you know, we've still got some concerts coming through. I was really disappointed to not be able to attend the fashion show last night, because, man, the talent, when you see what those students create themselves, create and make, they sew the things themselves, they design them, they choose their models, the whole thing, it's, it's incredible. I was also able to take part, I've had a lot of great experiences in the district just recently, I was able to take part in the IB five-year review survey day, so it was a whole day thing, and it's an experience they had, I guess IB requires it every. I guess IB requires it every five years that you do a review. One of the great things about the IB program, because it, it makes you have this evaluation process with an external accountability to it also. And it was the whole library in Somers full with the IB teachers and a sampling of IB students, mostly in the IB diploma program, a couple of parents, administrators. And the dialogue at each table was a mixed group. And the students that were at the table had an equal voice in, everybody had an equal voice in discussing the pros and the cons and what's working well and what's been a struggle as they talked through each item on the survey and then decided, you know, where they felt to rate it and complete this. It was quite a process. And so I know sometimes we say, are, are the students wing and are we hearing from the teachers? I can tell you, having, I was a parent of an IB student, that's part of how I got to be able to be there. But I mean, having, you know, you were really able to see, and I wish that everybody could have been there and I hope we can find a way, you know, to, to turnkey this with all the board members, the equal voices. I mean, questions would come up and somebody would say to a student specifically, what is your thought on that? We want to hear from you. So just knowing, no, those conversations are happening. It is at the table, the collaboration that's going on throughout the district and the feedback loop is outstanding. And with, that's going to be incorporating more as we're, because middle years program has to do the five-year review too also.
Yeah, in the fall, when they go for their accreditation, they'll do something similar on the front side.
Okay.
So hopefully have a few board members be able to join us for that one.
Excellent. So, yeah, and we did a facilities tour, so we got to see the boilers and some of the other things that need improvement. Took a look at the puddles. I have photos I have to share with you guys. I haven't had a chance to summarize some of these experiences to share with board members that hadn't been there. So that was all, all, all great stuff. And then I also just had one more point, sorry, I've talked a long time. One more point that I had just wanted to bring up. I just had wanted to address a statement that had come out in the Somers Record on May twenty-sixth. There had been, it could be misleading and could have been, it didn't accurately depict something that I had said. It was in a post, a trustee election comment in that, in the comment area. One individual had stated, "I continued my fight and emailed Heidi Cambrai, Board of Ed President, and the rest of the Board of Education. After numerous email exchanges, Heidi assured me that everyday math will be an agenda item on an upcoming Board of Ed meeting, since the administration ignored the community's concerns over the last seven years." And in my email exchanges with this individual, I had never exactly said that. I did convey that I had requested a conversation about general curriculum and how our curriculum program, how our curriculum is developed, how the programs are selected and what the review process is. I've actually spoken, talked through that with, with Ray and Kevin and Claire a little bit, gotten a preview to what we're going to be bringing to the board. So we are going to be having a talk about how the curriculum process goes and reviewed and that can be applied to anything. If, if everyday math comes into that, it would come into it, but understanding that process. So, and that's going to be coming to the board in late summer, early September, right at the beginning of the school year. And I, let's see, so, and I did not, so I had not said that we would specifically be adding everyday math to the agenda. The administrators do have a program for how, you know, plans for when they're reviewing things and talking about math. When we talk about math, everyday math would be a part of it, but it's not something that I'm asking that we need special attention to at this moment. I also did not state that the administration ignored any concerns. I had acknowledged in the email conversation that it must be frustrating to have had concerns for seven years, which weren't addressed in a manner that was satisfactory to the individual. And I pointed out that these particular concerns had not been brought to the Board of Ed by him or by others during the past four years. So I just had wanted to clarify that point. I did not want it to sound like I had said something, which I had not. And I think that's all I have to say, but overall, great night. And Joe, I'm gonna miss having you at the table with us.
Let me just go ahead and kind of close us out. So we've got, just again, same thing at every end-of-year celebrations, lots of more stuff over the next couple of weeks. We've got our graduation two weeks from tomorrow and so hopefully we'll get as nice of weather as we did last year and things like that. Concerts coming up and all those good things and certainly can only do a few examples on evenings like tonight, but the end of the year, it's really exciting to realize we haven't, you know, done this since really twenty-nineteen. And so it's been the three years since we've really done this because we didn't have live concerts in twenty, we didn't have it in twenty-one. So it's been quite a while since we've been able to take advantage. And you see, we're getting like really great crowds, like the, like at the fashion show last night, great crowd and things like that. So, and at the science symposium piece there, so really, really good numbers. But before I go, I wanted to just go ahead and, and I was gonna say a few things, but I think I'm gonna give Kevin the next twenty or thirty minutes to make some comments about Joe. I want to let him go what he wants with it, you know? We're gonna see what happens, so. But I do have a, just a, you know, kind of a thank you appreciation piece from the entire administrative team. Just wanted to say thank you for your service. And again, Joe, I've appreciated our conversations over these nine years. Again, from day one till today, I've always appreciated and highly respected your clarity and your directness and kindness to me as well too. It's, it's very helpful with all the noise that can be out there. I, I hear you very well on all matters of that spectrum as well too. Hey, were you doing this well? And these are something I think you need to pay attention to. So I've greatly appreciated and valued that and thank you for all your respect and service.
Anything else?
Oh, that's it, thank you.
All right. So be it resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin didn't get up.